Good evening. The June 19 meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent, and Steve Griffiths.
Here. And I'd like to take a moment to welcome the newest member of the Planning Commission to the Planning Commission. Maria McFarland was appointed by the City Council at their last council meeting, so welcome Maria. And we'd love it if you could tell us a few things about yourself.
Thank you, Steve. I have spent a lifetime in Oregon and around the country and places in the world that I never thought I'd get to, but I have also retired four times. I was a music teacher for a number of years. I was 35 years in IT, working including at places like that Enron place and for Ross Perot and others. So I've had quite a few experiences in IT. And then I've owned an insurance company, an ice cream parlor, and my own consulting company. So I've had a variety of applications and opportunities. And Lincoln City has always been very, very strong on my radar as to wanting to be part of it and part of a contributor to it. My aunt moved here in 1977, and she was more my mother than my mother. And so it's kind of in her honor taking up where she left off in this community and wanting to be a part of it, wanting to see it progress.
Thank you, Marie. I think your broad background is going to help us out a lot, so welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
May we have a motion to approve the minutes for our June 5 meeting?
I motion we approve our minutes for the June 5 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Now is our public comment section. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to us this evening? Welcome, and could you please introduce yourself and speak into the mic?
Chet Norakis, Lincoln City resident. Mr. Chair, Commission members, I'm here to thank you for your service, for the time you put into this endeavor and the energy you put into it. I just wanted to show up and say that I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
And good evening. Thank you. We have no final orders, resolutions, or written communications, no public hearings or deliberations, no old business, and we do have some new business this evening. Deb, will you be introducing our speaker tonight?
I certainly can, or Richard can.
Richard.
Okay. Meg Reed is here. Meg is a staff person, a coastal specialist with Department of Land Conservation and Development, and she is going to help us with a project to increase our resilience for tsunami, in the case of a tsunami here in Lincoln City. So she has power point. I have a couple more slides if we need them, and we just want to have some general discussion about getting this project started. I guess I should say that the City Council did appoint the Planning Commission as the Project Advisory Committee for this project. And so Steve had asked me if I thought that you were representative enough, you know, whether we had everybody sort of at the table that we should. And so, you know, I thought I would ask you if you feel that there's anybody who you would like to add to our Project Advisory Committee. And if so, we can certainly invite them to come and make sure they're here when we have these kinds of presentations.
Would you like us to ask, if you have questions, to ask them as we go along or wait until the end of your presentation?
Yes, please do. Feel free to interrupt at any time and ask questions and for clarification. I've been doing these types of presentations up and down the coast for the past couple of months, so I might forget something important, so please feel free to jump in. So I'm Meg Reed. I'm the Coastal Shore Specialist with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and I'm based in the Coastal Field Office in Newport. And so I'm working with a number of communities up and down the coast on a tsunami resilience land use project, and I'll talk more about that today, and then we can have some discussion about what that might look like for the city of Lincoln City. And this, we actually got some federal funding to do this project specifically through NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. They have a program called the Coastal Resilient Grant Program. And so we applied. It's nationally competitive. All coastal states and territories can apply for it, and so we were lucky to secure that funding to do this work with five cities in Oregon, which includes Lincoln City. And on this map you can see, the other cities in the blue colors, which are a little hard to see, are funded through this particular grant, which includes Gearhart, Rockaway Beach, Newport, and Port Orford, as well as Lincoln City. And then the other communities that you see listed are through an additional funding source that we secured a little bit earlier, and so they're the ones that have been, we've been working with them first. So Reed's Port and Florence, for example, are the ones that we've done the most work in to date. So we started this project in the fall, this past fall, and then we can, we're continuing for at least another year, potentially a little bit longer, and then we hope to bring it to other communities too who are interested. So you might be kind of familiar with tsunami planning and preparedness, some sort of more of a personal preparedness kind of perspective or emergency management perspective, but land use plays a really important role in preparing for a Cascadia subduction zone, earthquake, and tsunami. And that's in sort of the way that we develop our landscape. And because we've developed our landscape so much already without really knowing about this hazard, we now are focused more on life safety and evacuation, so making sure that people can get out of harm's way. And then the second component is that we have the ability to bounce back after disasters, so that's meaning our critical and essential facilities are still up and running, so we prefer them to not be in the tsunami inundation zone. So those are sort of the main components that we're focusing on with this project. So we have some land use planning measures that we can talk about a little bit more. And then the second piece is that we are contracting with the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries to do Beat the Wave mapping, and I'll show you some examples of what that is. So it's a detailed evacuation analysis that will be done for the city to kind of show vulnerabilities in the current evacuation for people in the community and see how we can improve upon it. So those are kind of the main components. So I wanted to just remind you of some existing resources that are out there for tsunami evacuation. So this one you've probably seen before. It's called the Tsunami Evacuation Map, SPID DOGAMI. And so they have these three main areas where the orange shows the maximum distance tsunami that we could expect, and so that would be from another place that has an earthquake and the tsunami comes to us. So the closest would be Alaska. And so in that case, we'd probably have about four hours to evacuate before the wave arrives, and it's much less. It doesn't, it didn't date quite as far. And then the yellow is the maximum considered earthquake for a local Cascadia event. So that's the extra, extra large, which I'll show you what that means in a minute. And then the green is high ground or safety. So those are available for the entire coast. This is the same thing, but it's an online viewer, so you can go to OregonTsunami.org. That's where all of these resources are if you ever want to get them. And it shows the same thing, the orange, the yellow, and the green, but it allows you to search more specifically for places that you're interested in. So if it's not contained in the brochure or you want to zoom in on something, you can do it through this viewer. This is the tsunami inundation maps, so that's what those evacuation brochures are based upon. And so this shows for all of the earthquake and tsunami events that we know about in our 10,000-year record, we have seen that they kind of fall into these different categories. And they've been sort of put in these buckets that we're calling T-shirt sizes, small through extra, extra large. And that's based on the magnitude earthquake from our Cascadia subduction zone. So it has a different, you know, if it's a slightly smaller earthquake, the tsunami doesn't go quite as far inland as if it's a bigger earthquake. So the small is the darkest of the purples there, so it's the least amount of inundation from a tsunami, and that's about an 8.7 magnitude earthquake, so it's still a very large earthquake, but it's not quite as large as it can go. And then the lightest of the yellows is extra, extra large, which is above a 9.0, a 9.1 or so earthquake. So, and that's really conservative estimate because again, this is for life safety purposes, so we really want to make sure that the water's not going any higher and that people will truly be safe when they're out of these zones. This is just another area of Lincoln City close up on those maps. And what this really helps us do, especially in planning, is that you can start to see the nuances of your risk. So you can start to see like, you know, how much of the city is in the small and the medium versus the large and extra large. So you can start to see, you know, where your varying levels of risk are. And so then the third product, which is what we're going to be doing through this project, is called Beat the Wave. And so this is an example from Rockaway Beach. And so what it shows is from any point in the community, how fast and in what direction you have to move to get to high ground before the first tsunami wave arrives, so literally beating the wave to safety. So there, the maps on this example are color-coded based on walking speed. So yellow is a slow walk, orange is a walk, and the dark orange is a fast walk, so that's what you see on the left-hand side. There's a lot of different things that go into this modeling, and I'm happy to answer questions about it if you'd like. I'm not the modeler, so I don't know every single detail, but I know a lot of it. It takes lots of things into account, such as the surface of the road that you're walking on, if it's a paved road versus a sandy road or gravel road. It's obviously a lot harder to walk through loose sand than it is to walk on paved surfaces, so those things are taken into account. You know, the, whether or not a bridge is retrofitted to withstand the earthquake shaking, that can be taken into account. So if it's not retrofitted, then we assume it's going to fail and you can't go over it. And so then that's what's shown on the right-hand side. On the very top part on 12th Avenue, there's an X through that bridge. That means people are not allowed to go across that bridge because it's not been earthquake retrofitted, so they have to go down. And it means their distance to high ground is a lot longer, and so their speed times go up to those pinks and purples, which are a slow jog, a run, and then the dark blue, which is a sprint. And, you know, even the most able-bodied people are not able to maintain a sprint for a long distance. So those are the things that really start to be highlighted with these types of maps. You can see, you know, maybe if we got the funding, it would actually be really worthwhile to retrofit that bridge because it will save a lot of lives. So those are the kinds of things that this modeling can really help to illuminate. This is just another example from the southern part of Rockaway Beach. Similarly, we can do different types of hypotheticals. It's not necessarily going to take landslides into account, but if there's a place that's really known for landslides, we can take that into account. So that's what's being shown on the bottom right-hand side because that might affect assembly areas or safety destinations if there's a large landslide risk. So you might want to do some mitigation for that or just know of other routes to take. If you have multiple options, you want to have, you know, them in the back of your mind so when you're actually evacuating, you might be, have to take a different route. And for landslides, to some extent, landslides might not matter. It might just mean that there's large amounts of sand or dirt on the road and you just crawl over it, you know, and that's okay. But some types of landslides are much more significant, and they'll cut, you know, like a chunk that creates a scarp and you can't get over it kind of thing. So those are the things that we're more concerned about.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is there any way to predict what areas might be, might be subject to subsidence and would create a barrier because the ground is sunk in and?
Yeah, so the models already take subsidence into account. For all of the evacuation brochures and Tims and all those things that I already showed, they already take subsidence into account based on lots of different factors. What it's not as good at taking into account is liquefaction, which is like where the soil gets really liquidy and sandy. And, you know, a lot of places along our coast are subject to liquefaction. The problem with it is it's one of those types of hazards that could, could happen everywhere, but it might not happen everywhere. So it's just really hard to predict where it would happen. It's kind of based on like what the water table is at the time of the event and, you know, if it's on fill and the different types of soil. So we can imagine that there will be a lot of it happening. But again, after shaking stops, the liquefaction goes away, so the ground returns to normal. And there might be like sand boils and things like that that have come up on the asphalt, but you can just walk over it. So if there are areas that you're really concerned about that being the case, we can think about that more and take it into account to the extent possible. So that, that's really good feedback. If you, if there are certain areas that you're really concerned about, or if there's mitigation techniques that you've been thinking about that might help, like a vertical evacuation structure, or a new bridge, or a new trail or something, we can use those when we start modeling and do hypothetical scenarios. So we want to make sure we incorporate all of the local feedback. So in addition to the Beat the Wave, we also do a socio-economic analysis, and this is just kind of a first-order look at, you know, not only what the road and trail networks are doing, but who is actually living in those areas, you know, what are their socio-demographics? And, you know, because that could illuminate whether evacuation might be difficult. And then again, it further helps to narrow down what kinds of evacuation improvements you might want to make. And then in addition to that, and we can talk about this a little bit more, but there's this model that FEMA uses a lot of times to estimate losses. It's called HAZIS. And they recently came out with a new part of the model that actually does losses for tsunami. They haven't had that before, so we're going to use that for this project. It can give you fatality estimates and cost estimates for damaged buildings within the tsunami zone. So, and there's some other things that might be, some things that we could give you based on time and budget for the, this project, so we'll, we can talk about that more later on to kind of get what the numbers are that you're interested in seeing. And this is just an example. So this kind of thing has already been done for the large tsunami scenarios, not all the way up to extra, extra large, but to the large, which encompasses 95% of the probability of the next earthquake event is within the large. And so from work that's already been done by the USGS, it's 16% of Lincoln City residents are in the large tsunami inundation zone.
Do we know how Lincoln City compares to other coastal, coastal communities in terms of that percentage?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I do have those numbers. I think off the top of my head, that's pretty good. There are some communities that are a lot higher. For example, I was just in Gearhart last week, and they have 82% of their residents live in the large tsunami zone. But then I was just in North Bend last night, and it's like, I think 5% lives in the tsunami zone. So it really varies quite a lot depending on the community, but I think generally Lincoln City has a lot of high ground, really close by, so there is a lot of potential for good evacuation here. So some things that you might be able to do with this data is evacuation improvements, which I've been talking about. These are just some pictures from around different parts of the coast that have done different types of evacuation improvements, such as Safe Haven Hill, which you might be familiar with in Newport. That's, it's just south of the 101 Bridge in Newport, and it's one of the main areas for evacuation for the Hatfield Science Community. And so they did a bunch of improvements. They just put in some blue lines, which are these lines that you put on the street that show the extent of inundation. So it's more of an educational tool so people see it every day and they get used to it. And then in Cannon Beach, they actually just finished a project where they put these tsunami evacuation signs with directional arrows every 50 feet so that people who are coming from the beach and probably don't live there and aren't familiar with the area have signs that guide them to safety, you know, every step of the way. So these are just different ideas that people have done. And then, so turning to the second part, the land use side of the project, there are a few different things that we can talk about how to make our communities more resilient to a tsunami. So we, it includes comprehensive plan policies, a tsunami hazard overlay zone, which would be similar to a flood hazard overlay zone or something like that in, in practice. And then what we call a tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan, which is just, you know, a facilities improvement plan but specific to tsunami evacuation. And that can be a really useful tool for a community to pick projects to improve upon evacuation over time. So talk more about those now. And we have lots of resources to help you with this. So in 2015, our department put out a land use guide for tsunami, and so this is meant to be a step-by-step tool for communities to use to help think about this hazard and know what to do. So we actually provide model code, which I think you may have gotten already and that we'll talk about more. This is the tsunami hazard overlay zone. And then we have the comprehensive plan policy model code language, and there's some other tools in there and resources and how to do that plan that I talked about before. We're giving you a grant for $14,000. It does require a one-to-one match, which can be in kind, so the total would be $28,000. And then you have a pretty new multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan, which some of you may have participated in that update process. It's for the entire county and each of the cities within the county, and that's a requirement for, to be able to get FEMA funding after a disaster. And so the, a lot of the elements of this project we'll touch upon are actually in your plan and identified as mitigation actions. And that's really good from a perspective to get more FEMA funding, so that's a really good thing to be able to, to go back to that plan and say that you're doing these items. So just to go in a little more detail about the tsunami hazard overlay zone, there's sort of three main things that it does. So it's a geographic boundary, so you would use potentially the tsunami inundation maps, those T-shirt sizes. So this is a really zoomed-out version, but this is Lincoln City, and so you can see those different, the small through extra, extra large. Those would be the boundary, and then you would attach regulations to that. And so there's really, like I said, three main things it does. So one is to limit certain uses, and that's really just critical and essential facilities. So schools, hospitals, police stations, detention facilities, things like that, things that really are meant to help the community be functional after a tsunami event. So those are the kinds of things, which are actually are already regulated through building code, but this would be to, to put it in land use, which it really is because it's about where you put buildings, not how you build them. And we recommend using the large line for those kinds of facilities because again, like I said, that encompasses 95% of your risk, so it's pretty good. But you can use a different line too if you feel like that something else would be better. And then for development that, more substantial development that would go in the inundation zone, you would have requirements for tsunami evacuation as part of that overall development plan. So for example, like a hotel or a new subdivision, something that had density, that, you know, they would have to either tie into existing routes, create more signs, create a new route to connect with other routes, things like that, which you could identify in your tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan, so that would be, they could work together. And then it could provide flexible development options, which could mean a lot of different things. So basically, if the overall design of the development was to, was more resilient to a tsunami than what was required, you might be less stringent on other underlying zoning, so setbacks, density, things like that. So those are all in the model code language, and they're all severable, which means any one of them can be taken away and the rest of it is fine. So you can look at it and see what you think works for Lincoln City and what doesn't, and of course modify as necessary.
Could you tell us a bit more about vertical development options? Is there such a thing?
Yes. Vertical evacuation structures are basically just some kind of structure that's built to withstand not only the earthquake shaking, but also the forces of the tsunami waves and get people above that. And it's usually in places where getting to high ground is really challenging. So for example, the first one that's ever been developed on the West Coast is on the Long Beach Peninsula in Washington. There's a school, a CAFSA school, that actually built it as part of their gymnasium, and the roof is the vertical evacuation structure, and it serves the entire community because there really isn't any high ground nearby for them. And they're actually building one now in South Beach in Newport for the new Marine Studies Initiative Building for OSU. And so it's going to be also integrated into the school building as a ramp on the outside so anyone can access it. It's not closed off behind any doors or things like that. I've seen them as standalone structures, so they're, they have no other use except to be evacuation, so it just wouldn't have a lot of other things going on. And they're actually thinking about building a berm in, in Washington as well. It has not yet been constructed, but basically like lots of fill and sand and things engineered to withstand all the shaking and the wave forces. And so it could be a park, you know, something that just gets people up high. So there are different ways of doing it, and there is some guidance out there for how you build such a structure and make sure that it is really strong and sturdy. But they, as you can imagine, they're very expensive to build, so they're, they're an option for sure. But horizontal evacuation is, is much easier and usually less costly than vertical evacuation. But there could be things in the code that could address that as well. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, as it's written now, the model code does not apply to single-family dwellings or any existing development, so it'd only be for new development moving forward. So the tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan is a comprehensive look at the evacuation on the ground now, as I had mentioned before. And so we're starting to do this for the first time now. We're just finishing up one for the coastal, unincorporated communities of Coos County, so like Charleston, Barview area, and the north spit of Coos Bay estuary. So we're putting one together for them, and then Reed's Port and Florence are getting theirs done right now. And so it just kind of helps to look at the whole community, see what the vulnerabilities are based on the Beat the Wave mapping results, and then suggest projects to, to improve that. So it could just be signage, you know, it could be really simple and just be, you know, we need more signs to identify our roots. Or it could be, you know, a new trail or reinforcing a trail to make it more earthquake-resistant and things like that. So there's lots of ways you could do it, and it helps to kind of scope out to some extent those projects. So again, like when funding or opportunities arise, you can jump on them more quickly because you've already done the work and you already know what you need to move forward. So I just wanted to point out the Safe Haven Hill example, I already talked about it in Newport, but they, they sort of basically did just that with Safe Haven Hill. They did evacuation improvements, and they were able to get a FEMA grant from, for doing that. And then there is a 75-25 match required for FEMA, so you have to come up with 25%. And Newport used urban renewal funds to do that. So there are municipal financing options that can be used for tsunami evacuation. So for next steps, as Deborah mentioned, you are the project management team, and so that can, you know, be a couple of different things, but what I would suggest as, as a whole team moving forward is that we come up with the priorities basically for how you want to take these things that I've talked about and move forward. So, you know, knowing what the city's already been doing for tsunami planning and preparedness and how that could integrate into this project, looking at the model overlay zone and, and figuring out the sort of basic information that can go into this tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan. And I'm sure Deborah probably has more thoughts on that, and if you wanted to show your model code slide if that's helpful. But then I'll just finish with our timeline. So we can start working on those land use planning measures now. And the Beat the Wave analysis, unfortunately, DOGAMI's a little backed up with their queue of other communities, so they are likely to come to Lincoln City this fall to do that modeling. And then obviously we'll want to do some community engagement along the way and get feedback from others who you think might be important to have on this group. So we have until next June, so a little bit, about a year basically from now to finish this project. Any questions before I ask?
Question?
Could you talk a little bit more about public outreach and public education components associated with these plans?
It kind of depends on what you guys want to do. You know, my specialty is not necessarily on outreach and public engagement. We do land use planning. We're kind of a one-trick pony. But we want to, you know, we're working with Mark, and I think we'll, we'll kind of look to you for guidance on when you think are the appropriate times to get feedback. I think probably the most important times will be on evacuation improvement projects themselves, you know, identifying what are the projects that we want to do and where they would go and what they would look like. The, and, you know, for the model hazard overlay zone, you know, obviously we have to have public hearings on that, so that's a minimum required for public outreach, but you could do more. So we could do like an open house or a workshop or something, put out the, the notice that the, the model code is out there. The, the model code's only eight pages, so it's really not too onerous to read through. And so hopefully we can, we can get some input on that, that way. But yeah, open to suggestion and ideas.
Well, I was, actually, I mean, that's, that's great. People should be involved, but I was actually more interested in whether your actual planning documents are incorporating an outreach component.
Oh, right.
The reason I'm asking is because we have a huge tourist population, many of whom come from inland states. I don't know how much geology they know and what they understand about the hazards here, so. here. So I'm wondering if, if in other plans that you've done for coastal communities that also have a big tourist component, is there some specific sections in there where you address that?
Yeah, that's a really great question and a great point. So I'll talk a little bit, maybe Mark has some other thoughts. Yes, we can definitely do that. We can incorporate outreach as part of these tsunami evacuation improvements because I think that is an improvement, you know, doing education. Because that's exactly right. You can, I mean, you can put up as many signs as you want, but if people don't really know what they're doing, they, it might not be worthwhile. So for example, in the other, in Coos County, we've suggested putting informational kiosks up at key places where tourists go for, out onto the sand dunes and things on the North Spit and the campgrounds. So we can add to that. There, there's a couple, the Oregon Marine Life Institute has a, like an aquarium where lots of people go and there's a visitor center. So we suggested having them do some outreach. There is something called a tsunami quest, which has been done in South Beach and it's kind of like a scavenger hunt that families can do and they can be adapted to do it for tsunami evacuation routes. So they're learning about the tsunami and they're learning their route as they go. And so that's like a fun activity that people can do. So the, I mean, there's probably, you know, many, many more things. A 5K event's been suggested, Cannon Beach does one that race the wave 5K and that helps get people from out of town to know more about the, the tsunami and the preparedness. And you can have the prizes be, you know, a go bag. So those kinds of things can be incorporated in the plan. So I'm definitely, yeah, open to any and all ideas. That is good.
I had one question for you. You mentioned different sources of funding. Are there any out there that might cover the cost of Lincoln City? For example, purchasing land and building catches for emergency supplies?
Yeah, I, I don't know. That's a good question and it's something that I think many communities are struggling with. Cash is a huge undertaking to finance because you have to maintain it in perpetuity, right? And you have to rotate the water and the food every so often and things like that. So I, I don't know. FEMA probably won't pay for the supplies. They might pay for the land potentially for acquisition and like clearing of it, you know, if there was trees on it or something and improvements to, to make to it. That could be possibly FEMA funding, but the supply cash itself, probably not.
But what about the catch or the, you know, where we would store the supplies, a building for that?
The building itself.
Locker for it or whatever.
Yeah, I, that's a good question. I'd have to get back to you on that. Cause they did do that at Safe Haven Hill and FEMA paid for, they made new trails up to the top and they cleared the whole top. And I'm just not sure if FEMA bought the actual cash box or if, do you know? Yeah.
Is this on? I guess it is. Yeah, Mark Nicholson, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. In general, a lot of the funds through FEMA are what they call mitigation. They do not consider cash as mitigation because it's not something that helps immediately. It's, it has more of a long-term impact. However, it's my feeling if, if we develop this tsunami evacuation facilities implementation plans, really our improvement plan, it really functions as a master plan in the way that all other master plans work. And that is basically, once you've developed a master plan and adopted it, it's much easier to look back at that and get funding for the components because you've shown already that you've thought it through. That way the cash has become part of a system, not a one-off. So I'm hoping there's a way we can model that so that, so that, so that that could be covered. But it's not the way that Newport, the way that Safe Haven Hill was, would be along the same lines as a vertical evacuation anywhere else. It's, that's what was funded through a mitigation grant. The, the cash or was accessory to that really, but that wasn't the focus. So if it's part of a bigger plan, I think there's a chance.
Strategy then, yeah. Thank you.
That makes sense.
Any other questions?
I have a question. With your other communities, have there been any rehearsals to see how these plans work with the existing people there?
Do you mean like an evacuation drill? Newport does them, the Hattieville Community does it twice a year. They go once to the Safe Haven Hill and once to the Community College, which is a little bit further away, but better high ground. So they do that of their own accord. They're sort of fortunate because there's a lot of state agencies there and the, the school campus is there. So they sort of are self-organized and self-motivating, but the community, the city also participates with them because they have to close 101 to cross the bridge and things like that. So, and I think other communities do it, I'm just not as familiar necessarily with them. But there is actually a guidebook that the Oregon Office for Emergency Management just put out that it's kind of a, meant to be a guide on how to do a community wide evacuation drill. So that's out there as a resource and we can certainly reference it in our, in the plan to, you know, if that's something that's identified as something Lincoln City would like to do as community-wide drills or even, you know, neighborhood-wide drills are also really helpful to, for each little neighborhood to do its own drill so they become more familiar with each other and the, and the landscape.
Yes, Gary.
Yeah, I noticed that they put new signs out in Lincoln City and...
On 101, you mean?
Other places too. And, and I guess the science behind the signs, I'm trying to determine how they come up with it because the next question that comes to my mind is, and how do insurance companies react to those signs?
So every indication that we've had with insurance companies, there's, they, they don't include it in their insurance coverage, meaning like it's not, your rates aren't going to go up because your house is in a tsunami inundation zone. And that, those maps have been out for a long time. The, the issue with tsunamis, especially our particular hazard, is that their recurrence interval is very long. Like our last one was in 1700. So you can't put an actual real rate on that very easily. So you can get earthquake insurance and you can predict earthquake predictabilities, but you can't do that for tsunami. So there, you know, you're not going to need to get flood insurance if you don't already need it for, you know, just being in a flood zone. You can though, you can get flood insurance for tsunami protection and it will protect you and it's way cheaper than if you got it because you had to get it. If that makes sense. And for homeowners insurance, your rates don't go up because of that and, and you don't have to get like a certain different type of insurance or things like that. So it doesn't affect insurance.
One question, I'll go. Did you want to add to that?
No, it was a different, it was a previous point. I'll fill it in later.
Is ODOT making any effort to retrofit bridges along 101?
They have a plan for the entire state of, state highways and they, they've done a tiered system and their priorities for now are in eastern Oregon because our supplies for the entire state will be coming in through Redmond probably. And there's an airport there and it's on the other side of the cascade, so it won't be affected by the earthquake. So those are sort of the, the roads and, and bridges that are going to be hardened first and then the valley and then the coast. And I think some bridges, like actually Florence is just getting a bridge upgrade right now over their 101 bridge over the Saguasla and it is being retrofitted for an earthquake. So I think as improvements are made, it will be piecemeal. But I, you know, the, the message, and I'm sure Mark can correct me if I'm wrong on this, that we're, we're bringing to communities is that you should be, expect to be isolated from each other and the valley and that people should be individually prepared for at least two weeks or longer because there will not be an easy way for people to access with supplies.
Any more questions?
I don't know how long you want to spend on this this evening, but we could take a closer look at the overlay zone if you would like and just kind of, I, I have a couple of slides there showing the tsunami inundation maps that Meg already showed you. But then also I have just put some bullet points on the PowerPoint that kind of are outline of what's included in that zone. I know a couple of other times when we've brought that up, people have wanted to know more about that. So if you'd like to do that, we can do that or we can do it another time.
I think this would be a good time to do it.
Keep going, okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so Meg has actually had experience putting these together and I'm just reading the model code, but, so it might be nice to have her stay here. This is the north end of Lincoln City. You can see roads end up here and the highway going out of town. So we have a couple of patches here in the, in the biggest tsunami event that would be inundated. And again, here is Devil's Lake and the Devil's Dee River. So you can see we have some areas scattered around in here, but of course, right at the mouth of the river, it's going to be inundated even in the, in the lesser tsunamis. And, and that, yes?
The Dee River Bridge, over that is being redone this next year, I think. Is it being retrofitted to the highest standard?
Not that I'm aware. Mark, do you know? Richard?
We don't think so. So that may, may appear in our plan at some point, right? So, and then the, in the south area of town, we have some of the larger inundation areas. And of course, again, the purple are the ones that are inundated even with, not a distance, but a smaller 8.0 type tsunami. And then as you get into these yellow areas, that would require like a 9.0 tsunami before those become inundated. But it is an interesting question. So if we are going to establish new standards, should we apply them to any tsunami risk or only to, you know, ones that are more likely to happen?
I have a question. Part of that map is not in the city, it's in the county, correct?
Out here, right. So city limits are probably along here.
So would our project be working at all with the county to sort of come to agreement?
Raise the bridge, yeah.
Is, is the county doing one as well?
No, Lincoln County isn't participating with us currently, but it is, I mean, that's a good point, right? You'd want the risk level potentially to match what the county is doing. I guess it's also kind of depends on whether those areas of the county would be, do you think that they would be developed with critical facilities? Do you know what I mean? Like, cause that's really what this is regulating is the, the kind of critical facilities. So if, there are probably areas where they might be built, but others where they probably wouldn't be built. So I think that's something to think about. But, you know, we have a good relationship with them, so we could talk to them about that.
For instance, on this map, our water treatment plant is out in the county and our sewer treatment plant is actually in the city, but it's, it's, they're both in the inundation zones.
Are they both in, in the inundation zone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So, okay, the first thing that the, we would have in our overlay zone, well, we do have, would have a definition section somewhere in the, in the overlay. And then we'd have the purpose. And the model code suggests that it's to increase resilience through regulation of new development and substantial improvements in the tsunami hazard areas in a manner that reduces loss of life, damage to property and disruption to, you know, various systems and that increases the ability, a community's ability to respond. So we will probably be bringing you something at some point along here, a proposed ordinance. And so we'd like some input as, as we're going through these things this evening. You might as well tell us, you know, how you're feeling about these things. So I'm just going to keep going unless you, unless you pipe up though, so. Applicability, the, the overlay zone itself would apply to all the areas that have the potential for inundation. So all this, all the T-shirt sizes. But then we might break it down for each section of the code in different regulations that we want to apply to smaller portions of that overall area. Number three, the model ordinance suggests that we require all applicants for new development in tsunami areas to provide us with that depth info, depth information. So, and we'll have to see how useful that is or whether that would be available readily to the city staff in doing our reviews anyway. Maybe it's easier for us, but maybe it does cause the applicants to be aware of what they're up against and that there may be something in that that is worthwhile. Number four says that basically, this is an overlay zone, so that means there are underlying zones in the city, you know, our single family zones, multifamily, commercial. And basically it's saying those uses are allowed except for what we would prohibit in the next section. So, so that's the beauty of an overlay zone is that you don't have to build it from the ground up. You already have zones underneath. This just says if you're in an inundation zone and in the commercial area, then you have these additional requirements or restrictions. So the prohibited uses, you know, Meg basically mentioned the, the critical care facilities like hospitals and medical facilities, providing surgical or emergency services. Obviously, you know, you want to have those on high ground where they're safe in the case of a tsunami. Same with fire and police stations and emergency response centers and communications. School buildings with greater than 250 people. And we have moved out our Taft Elementary School out of the tsunami zone. That was a number of years ago. And colleges and adult education centers with greater than 300 persons. And, you know, I think the idea with the model code is they've thrown out a number here, they've thrown out a use and a number, you know, maybe we want a different number, maybe we want to do something differently with that use. Jails and detention centers, of course, need to be in high ground. Now, I noticed that there were two sections to, to the prohibited uses and it divides right here and then it talks about another one. So you might, you might say the first ones need to be out of all of the inundation zones, all the T-shirt sizes. And then maybe the second group, you want them to be, you know, treat them a little bit differently. But the second group had tanks and structures containing water and fire suppression materials. So in other words, don't build your, you know, maybe your water storage tank in a tsunami zone. Emergency vehicle shelters and garages, emergency preparedness centers, stand-by power generating equipment for essential facilities, covered structures for the assembly of greater than 300 people. And, you know, we do have the park area, for instance, that was vacated by the Taft Elementary School. We want to make that into a park. And so, you know, that may be one thing that we want to keep in mind. How, how many people do we want to attract to that part of town at one, at one event? And what precautions would we need to take if we were going to make that a place to Medical facilities with 50 or more resident incapacitated patients. Here's one, residential uses with higher densities, densities of greater than 10 units per acre. So that would be like our multifamily zones. And hotels or motels with more than 50 units. Right now, we do have hotels that are larger than that in the tsunami zone, but this, this model code makes it very clear. And I think this is what we also will want to do is that prohibitions of the subsection will not render any uses that are already exist as non-conforming. So they could go ahead and, you know, make repairs and improvements without being considered non-conforming.
One question.
Yes.
Hopefully this never happens, but say there is a tsunami and it knocks down hotels that are all on the beach. Would we allow them to rebuild there?
You know, that's an interesting question. I've thought a lot about that because after a big event or a series of events that might go along with, with the big one, we might be good for another 300 years, you know? But maybe, but maybe not. I mean, it's an average. It's not a, it's not a guarantee.
Right.
So that is a very good question. And when we do our comprehensive plan, we are going to probably want to give some consideration to a before and after tsunami scenario.
Creating urban reserve areas perhaps where we could build in the future, you know?
Yes.
Tsunami zone.
Yes. Yeah. So, and maybe that's something we'll want to address in our overlay zone too. I don't, I'm not sure exactly how we do that. Has anybody done? Has anybody done that yet, Meg?
No. That's definitely a tough one. There, I mean, there could be parts of land where there are hotels now that are now, that it will be title afterwards. So they, like, they won't be buildable.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right. And that's usually the way it goes. It's just going to pull out a bunch of stuff that was there and most of it be building. Uh, I just, just curious. It's a hard one. I mean, if I owned one of those hotels, obviously I'd want to rebuild, but even then I'd probably be like, maybe we should take a few steps.
Yeah. Maybe not, not the greatest place for investment at that point.
There could be insurance considerations as well.
Well, that's true.
Sure.
And also, you know, just our infrastructure, it depends on, you know, where we'll put back our highway maybe or, or our sewer and water, uh, mains. And so that may also influence what's, what's going to be buildable in, in that case. So, yeah. Um, that's a sobering thought, isn't it?
So, so commercial activities, certain commercial activities can be prohibited within the overlay zone. For example, if we thought it's probably not a good idea to have a daycare, I'm just throwing it out there, you know, somebody with a bunch of little kids to be responsible for to move, so.
Well, that's interesting. Yeah, it does talk about incapacitated patients, but, um, you know, little children are the, sort of in the same situation that they're not able to save themselves, that they would require, it would require somebody to be able to get them to safety.
So this overlay zone, we could eliminate that type of commercial activity?
Yes, you could do that. I thought there was something in there about daycares, but I could be wrong. It might be later on.
Uh, the schools, school buildings, but that's over 250 people, so I don't, yeah.
Yeah, but that, yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, I, you know, and I think that's curious too. I mean, we're a small town and we have small schools.
Right.
And those schools aren't any less important because they have 100 kids in them versus 250 in them.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not sure, I appreciate the distinction of size there.
Right. We may want to have a different size or no size.
Just if they're a school, then they have to fit into that.
They should not be in the tsunami evacuation.
If your children involved, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So then number six actually allows exceptions to number five. So uses are prohibited except if the location in a tsunami zone is strategic. Say for instance, maybe your, um, tsunami warning system, you know, you want to have it in the tsunami zone. Um, or if no alternative site exists, or if mitigation is adequate and you may, you know, that's a, that will be something we'll have to talk about, you know, is what, what sort of mitigation would make it acceptable? So, um...
It seems like that would have to be a case-by-case discussion.
Maybe it would be a variance.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. So then number seven talks about evacuation route improvements and requiring those for all except single-family development. And there you might say why exclude single-family development? But, um, uh, in that case, onsite improvements might be pedestrian access for all weather and lighting conditions. Uh, another suggestion is frontage improvements, uh, that would be along the streets, um, on evacuation routes. And, um, so it would be similar to when we require street sidewalk, um, utilities for a new planned unit development. We'd also be requiring if they're in the tsunami area, uh, to do these frontage improvements for the evacuation routes.
You mean frontage improvements exactly?
Pardon me?
What do you mean by that, frontage improvements?
Well, I don't know exactly. Um, if there is, maybe we, instead of having the evacuation, evacuation route along the street, there would be a more direct way to get to high ground. And so we would want to have a trail.
Okay.
You know, that kind of thing. I'm, I'm making things up, obviously, but that's when we do our facilities, um, evacuation, tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan, we will identify those types of things.
Okay.
And, um, and just as we've identified, you know, streets and where we want sidewalks in town, we would identify those, where those locations would be. And the third one under there is vertical evacuation if there's no other option, uh, because that is an expensive, uh, thing to do. And then also under that, uh, evacuation route improvements, there would be the off-site improvements. And that's where maybe you get into the, even if the evacuation route doesn't go right past your prop, or through your property, uh, it would be a way for developments to contribute to the overall development of that, of that evacuation route for the benefit of the people who are using the property. And, um, in that case, um, again, talking about all-weather path surfaces, horizontal clearance. And this one was kind of alarming to me because it suggests that we might need to remove trees that could fall and block the path. And, you know, that could be a lot of our trees, so I don't know.
A lot of trees.
That's definitely something we should look at. Uh, and then, uh, and as an option, um, if you're not building something specifically or there's not a reason to pay, make those payments into that, of those improvements right now, having a payment, uh, in lieu of improvements. And we do that now. Uh, we have a deferred improvement agreements, uh, for various infrastructure. Um, also there might be an option of local improvement district or, um, something like that, or maybe adding something to our system development charges, uh, when you're in the tsunami zone, to, in order to raise that capital to make improvements.
Or perhaps a reduction in somebody's property taxes if they allow an evacuation route through their backyard or something.
Sure, there could be incentives as well, yeah. That's a great idea. Yeah. Okay, so not too much more here, but, um, number eight, uh, talks about vertical evacuation structures. First of all, it has to be above the extra, extra-large inundation level. Um, you know, there was, there were some really tragic, uh, things that happened in, in Japan because they thought they had built them high enough and they weren't high enough. And you can't imagine anything worse than sending somebody to the top of a structure and finding out, you know, that they weren't safe. And so, um, in this case though, you know, we would have vertical evacuation structures that would be higher probably than our 45-foot maximum limit in, that's in the, set in the charter, no building shall be over. And so, you know, that will take some additional consideration and, um, action from the city in order to change that. So, number nine, these flexible development options, uh, Meg mentioned these, all these things, but, um, we have a lot of flexibility anyway in our development patterns and I, I'm, I'm not sure, we'll, we'll have to really give some thought on how, what, whether that would be helpful and in what way, uh, given our zoning the way it is. Number 10 is hazard disclosure statements. Uh, and this is, would be a requirement that those who are in the tsunami and are doing some kind of a building project, uh, would have to identify on their applications, on their plat, if it's a, a development or, and recorded on deeds that they are in fact, uh, in a tsunami hazard area. And, um, that there may be some of these other requirements then that would apply. So, um, and then, uh, you know, I made up 11 because there's always something else, right? That, you know, so, um, you know, and I was thinking that maybe some of those things might be, um, if we have a development in a tsunami area, maybe, uh, the development should have some, make some contribution to caches of, of emergency supplies, uh, to, uh, providing to-go kits for people who are staying at their hotel or, um, emergency, I don't know, emergency lighting in hallways came to mind, but I imagine that's a building, maybe a building code thing if it's not. Um, and seismic standards, um, and so that people can at least get out. And, um, and then of course, you know, you mentioned education and awareness and maybe there's some responsibility there that, um, it's not, um, that could be assigned to those that, uh, develop additional, uh, new buildings in the tsunami area. So that's basically the run-through. Oh, and I, I didn't follow along with my, uh, PowerPoint, but there it is, everything I just said.
I just have one more quick question for everybody. Um, is there plans for these coastal communities? I, I understand that the hospitals, fire and, and police already probably have some standard plans of how to react to, to emergency situations, but does our sewer, water and power have these things involved? Cause I know a lot of our power and whatnot comes from the other side that we won't be able to get to. Um, what do we have in line for that? I mean, I, a hospital can only run on generators for so long before we run out of fuel.
Mark, do you want to talk about that?
No.
No?
(laughing). Um, yeah, of all those, I mean, fuel is probably the most critical and the most difficult to manage. There are, uh, I mean, there are a lot of people working on that at the, at the local level, by local county level, uh, their efforts underway to estimate fuel usage and how much would be required, but all the way up to the state and FEMA are very well aware of the fuel situation, especially because most of the fuel reserves in Portland will be wiped out, most likely. So we're not in very, you know, we don't have something to fall back on.
Right. That's what I was trying to get at.
In, in the way that you would hope.
Would it benefit the coastline to maybe invest in some sort of self-contained power and fueling system?
You know, yeah, I mean, possibly. The, the, you know, the problem is that we're looking at an event that doesn't happen very often. So whoever's investing in that...
I, I, I think more, more often than not that I think about earthquakes than I am about the, the, the tsunami effect from the earthquakes, because we do have earthquakes on a more, much more regular basis. And if there was one just big enough to take out the couple of bridges that we need to get inland, um, and do it one landslide on 18, we're done. That's it. That, you don't even need a big shake for that.
True.
Rains bring most of that mud down on 18 on a regular basis.
So Sean, are you thinking about like solar and, and wind power and off-grid type of things?
Something that we can do that would be independent from inland and their power sources, because my, my, my feeling is that whether it's a tsunami or some other storm catastrophe, it's going to happen. It does, it's just, you know, pick, pick which way, which arrow we're going to get stuck with, but it's probably going to happen at some point. And I would think that it would probably be beneficial if we started to plan for the likelihood and be ready rather than running around knowing that we're going to run out of fuel.
Well, I mean, there are plan, and there are, there's a lot of planning going on.
A lot of planning going on.
But, but that, you know, what that translates as is huge volumes of fuel being shipped into the state in effect. I mean, you know, it's a big, it's a large scale, uh...
No, I get it.
It's a large-scale issue. On, on a local, local level, yeah, we can get power knocked out for a week or, or whatever on a fairly regular basis that doesn't even require an earthquake.
Is the new hospital going to have solar or things, uh, that nature so that they can be self-sufficient?
Planners?
Well, we have not, we don't have a requirement that they do that, and I don't know that they are proposing that. Um, you, Richard?
I don't know of a proposal to do that. I know, uh, a couple of years ago, the city was looking at a fairly large, uh, solar array that, uh, ended up turning out not to be economical because of a federal subsidy issue. And that's, um, actually the lack of this federal subsidy in that particular case. So there's, the main thing in the way is finances.
Always is.
Well, and that's something that we certainly should address in our, uh, tsunami evacuation facilities plan. Maybe that would be part of that.
It's a really important point. The, the problem with the tsunami evacuation improvement plan is that it's really focused on immediately, immediate life safety. It's not really focused on...
On how we...
On how you recover after that, you know? Like you've gotten to high ground, yay, and now what? You know? So I, I think that's, I mean, it's, it's so important.
Unfortunately, your plan brings up all these questions.
I know, no, I totally, I totally agree.
But, you know, we do have also the hazards mitigation plan and maybe that's a more appropriate place for it.
Okay.
And that's something that we update every five years. And so we can always make amendments to it.
Yeah, I, I think for, for, uh, something that, that we have some control over, the natural hazard mitigation plan feeds in. The other, uh, there's, if you haven't seen it, the Oregon resilience plan is essentially a 50-year plan. And this is where ODOT breaks down all of the bridges that will need work and a rough schedule of doing that.
Right.
At least a relative priority, I should, prioritization, not necessarily a schedule. But, um, and they talk about every, they talk about, uh, electrical and sewers and water and what can be expected and that type of thing. So I think the problems are fairly well-defined. The problem is to do what's in that 50-year plan requires more money than anyone's ever going to have. So it's a good way to prioritize and especially like bridges in answer to, I mean, the, if the infrastructure gets put back together, then a lot of those other issues become...
Go away.
Because even if Portland had tons of fuel, even if it wasn't wiped out, there's still no way to get it out here until the roads are functioning.
Sure.
So that's kind of a, the critical, I think the transportation is really...
And even if the bridges don't fail, the road will still be so full of so much clutter and debris, they would not be usable anyway for a good period of time.
I mean, we're, we're fortunate in a sense because 18, ODOT has, has identified, are they lifeline routes? Is that what they're called?
Lifeline routes.
Uh, certain lifeline routes and 18 is one. So that means it'll, it'll get maybe more attention than some of the other, uh...
Okay.
East-west connections.
That was...
So the assumption is 18 and then, and then 101, I think, north and south. So in a sense, we're, we're in better shape than we might be.
Okay. That's, that's good news. Thank you.
Yeah, if you ever really don't want to sleep at night, I would suggest reading the Oregon resilience plan.
Awesome. I'll be right on that.
And it's, it's online.
Yeah, it's online, yeah.
Where at online?
If you just Google Oregon resilience plan, it should come up. It's a PDF document. It's fairly large, but it was a really comprehensive look at, you know, the state of Oregon and I think it was in 2012 is when it came out.
A few years ago, yeah.
So it's a few years old at this point. So some improvements have been made since then, but it definitely pinpoints a lot of our vulnerabilities and what it would take to get better and, and to be more prepared and so, and on, you know, every sector. So I think, you know, that's, that's the, what we're striving towards. Every part of the state is striving towards that, but we're definitely a long way away from being adequately prepared.
Eventually, I would hope we, we would be as prepared as Japan and some other countries are.
That is the hope, yes. But, um, Japan, yeah, I mean, they, they're just so ahead of us in a lot of ways. They just, they've known about their hazards for a lot longer than we have. It's part of their culture. They practice all the time. Their buildings are already earthquake retrofitted and things like that. So we, we have a lot of catching up to do. And it's just unfortunately, we didn't know about this hazard for a really long time. It's very quiet.
But Japan did do some re, if zoning is the right word.
Yes.
Um, after where they said, okay, in the low levels, that's just warehouses from now on, you know, individual housing, up, move up the hill, that type of thing. So, and I believe Japan, um, had a moratorium before the event. I know some places have had that, like you, you asked about can you build right away? Had in advance said, we're going to have a, a six-month moratorium on building while we figure out what's going on. So if we haven't detailed all the plans in advance, get a chance to catch up before just turning everybody loose with, with old wood and nails. Yeah.
Let everybody calm down and sort it out.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you, yeah. Any further questions?
Do we have a schedule?
Yeah.
Do you want to say anything about a schedule to get this plan done?
Yeah.
You kind of put a slide up there.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
It's got to be completed by June, correct?
Yes.
Can we have until June next year, fall?
Okay.
The big, from, I, I think from, I think our perspective, one of the real focal points of this is this beat-the-wave modeling, because that will probably give some real impetus in some areas that something needs to change. I, I mean, I use Cutler City as an example. Um, that beat-the-wave modeling, I don't think will, will be a very pretty picture. So that we can, you know, we can, we can use that as we, as we move forward. It's not that we need that to know, but, but it will sort of quantify the risk in a sense. It's not that we need that to know, but, but it will sort of quantify the risk in a sense. That we're saying in the fall, I think that will really be the, kind of a critical point, jump-off point. And I wanted to, while, while I'm at it, when you asked about outreach or events or that type of thing, we're hoping to have both small-scale and large-scale evacuation drills, ideally just after that beat the wave thing has happened, as part of that education campaign, kind of ground-truthing a bit. Now, maybe part of the process, I don't know, but definitely, because a lot of it is computer modeling, it's not, you know, these geologists aren't running up and down from the beaches to, to safety, but there, we'd hope we could integrate that so that we get some kind of ground-truthing of what we turn up in the modeling. So that would probably be in the fall. I'd like to think around the time of the great Oregon shakeout in mid-October because there's a lot of publicity around that anyway. People tend to be aware.
And Richard, in terms of sequencing, we would sort of want to work on this as we're working on the comprehensive plan or, or, you know, make our decisions on this prior to completing the comprehensive plan.
Ideally, we'd want to have this before we complete the comprehensive plan. Timing may not work quite right on that, but ideally, that's the way we want to go. Worst case is that shortly after we adopt the comprehensive plan, we get the new information and amend it accordingly.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
So I want to ask my fellow commissioners, we're the project team, are you fine with that?
I'll be okay with it.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we need outside expertise, we can always invite people in who we may question or get feedback from in terms of issues that come before us.
Sure.
At work? Yeah, okay. Thank you for bringing that up, Deborah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Richard, you're on.
Yes, I am. Okay, this is about amendments to the sign ordinance that we have. This is a discussion only, it's not the hearing or anything like that. Really, this is essentially the grand unveiling of some proposed changes to the, to the, our sign code. There will be public hearings at the planning commission, at the city council. They have not been scheduled yet, but there will be mailed notice to all property owners, and they'll be published in the news guard and just a lot more publicity in general. But even before that, we want to be doing outreach to the community, in particular to community groups that we want to, want to go to. So as I said, this is the, just the unveiling, it's the first step, and we will be looking for a lot of feedback on, on this. And we will have these on the, have this on the city webpage pretty quickly, too. So the changes that we're proposing, obviously, the, the natural question is why are you making changes? And the principal reason behind it is because our code contains a lot of what are called content-based distinctions. And that is something where you treat signs differently based on what they say. Under federal jurisprudence now, such a distinction is considered, is presumed to be invalid. You can have some content-based distinctions, but in very limited circumstances, and it has to be based on a compelling state need. So if, if you can't justify the different treatment of signs without reference to the content, or if, if some sign rules that were, were adopted because of disagreement with what the sign says, then that is clearly content-based and clearly illegal. As I said, there are circumstances when it's okay to have a content-based distinction, but they're very limited, and again, it has to be a compelling state need, which typically is health, safety, and welfare. In, in, actually, in the, the draft code that we have, that you have before you, there are, there's at least one and probably a couple of distinctions that are content-based and which I believe would pass constitutional muster. And the main, the main thing is where we have an exemption for addresses on a house or apartment units or motel units, where you can have the number on it. Well, that's content, saying what that sign can say. But because a quick and effective emergency response is important, we can say that's, that's a compelling state need. That's safety and health of the, of the individuals. So I, I think that would stand up to constitutional review. In the matter, the materials that you've got, if you look, I gave you two versions. There's the red line version and the clean version. And if you look at the red line version, there's, it looks like there's a lot of changes. And there are, but most of them are very minor. They are, they're grammatical, where we've taken things and tried to put it in, into active voice or made more clear exactly who it is that's acting. We have changed in a lot of places the words shall to read must, make it clear that, that you have to do it more, less legalese, I guess is what we were trying for here. So, so a lot of the changes in there are, are just grammatical. We tried to also add clarity and simplicity to it, and then also there are some additions that I'll, I'll go into a bit as, as I go through here. And if, if you have questions, interrupt. So one of our, our content-based distinctions, just an illustration of, that we have are, is presently, we, we have a thing that says, "Real estate sign means a temporary sign, placed on property for the purpose of advertising to the public the sale or lease of the property." Key wording there is "for the purpose of." That is saying what the sign is allowed to say. And so a sign that, for instance, that said, you know, "Go Taft Tigers" would not be allowed on a property that's for sale, but one that, but if it said for sale, that would be allowed. Question is, what's the compelling state need there? Why treat them differently? If you allow one sign, why not allow the other? So there probably is no compelling state need in that kind of situation. So the proposal is to change it rather than saying what it has to say. It's basically a time limitation. You can have it on the property while the property is being offered for sale or lease. Doesn't say what it can, what it has to say, just says during that time it's for sale or, or being offered for sale or lease, you can have a sign on the property. We're putting in words that say it's being done, being done in good faith, so, so you don't just get a, get a sign because you say something is for sale if it's not really for sale or whatever. So that's just an example. There are a lot of things that aren't being changed in here. Again, most of the changes that were put in are, are grammatical and simplifications. We have, we're not proposing any changes to the sizes of the allowed signs, where, where you can have allowed signs and the number of allowed signs. So fundamentally, what you can, what you can do with signs is, is essentially unchanged. Again, with, there's, there's a few added prohibitions that I'll go into, but I just want to hit on those. One of the, the big changes I really want to draw attention to is about flags. Presently, we exempt flags from the sign permit requirement, and the revised, this revised ordinance would continue to do that, but it adds a definition of flag that's, that's restrictive and intentionally so. It says that flag has to have certain rectangular proportions of, of width to height. And the reason I've proposed that is because I believe the intent of the original drafters of the flag exemption were thinking in terms of what you think of as a flag, the US flag or the Oregon state flag or what have you. But again, we can't regulate content without a compelling state need. So you can have flags, because all kinds of things are flags. These are flags that would, that would meet the definitional standard without regard to their content. We, again, we can't say that the US flag and the Oregon flag are allowed, but no other flags are allowed. So, you know, if, if you can have a US flag or an Oregon flag, why can't you have a Hawaii flag like at the bottom right here? Or why can't you have one that says sale, you know, or antiques or what have you? So again, we've put in a restrictive definition, and the reason for that is that the flag definition, or the flag exemption, I should say, which lacked a definition, was, there's some concern that it may be being abused, where some things that people may think are flags but aren't what the, the drafters of that flag exemption were thinking of. So to make it clear those things aren't, aren't allowed. So we get things like this that aren't flags. They're basically feather banners or whatever. There's lots of different names for them, but they're not flags within what we're talking about here. And some people have said, you know, it's a, it's a piece of cloth on a pole, it's a flag. And this is making clear that not all pieces of flags on, not, not all pieces of cloth on a, on a pole are flags. These aren't, and neither are those. So there are some other new prohibitions going in that, just to, I guess, the, the basis for them is, is trying to draw a line on where, what level of signage of, of different kinds people want to have. Our, our sign code right now is very conservative, and the intent basically is to stay within, keep that conservative nature, where a lot of things that other places might allow, we don't. I say ours is conservative, there are places that are a lot more conservative than what we have. I lived in a town in Virginia where every sign, for a while, every sign had to be identical. There was a specified design of the sign, included a roof and, and all this stuff, and the colors were prescribed, and you'd go through town and there's signs, but they're all identical. They don't do that now anymore, but as I said, there are places that are much more restrictive than we are, even though we are relatively restrictive. But a couple of things that I'm adding, proposed add specifically are prohibition on balloon signs, which are defined as, as signs filled with a lighter-than-air gas and are tethered to the ground, and inflatable signs, which usually just are, they have a pump that's, putting air through them to keep them inflated.
Signs versus decorations.
You bring up a spider by any chance?
No, I'm thinking about a Christmas, stupid.
I was thinking about, some people put some pretty ugly things in their yards at Christmas time that they call decorations. Not to say that other people can't match them as ugly, but I mean, there's just some things that.
It's an interesting question, and what we have doesn't address that. Question is, are those inflatable Christmas decorations, for example? Are they signs?
Yes.
One could, one could make the point that they are, and it may be appropriate to have some kind of seasonal exemption or something like that.
Do you have this related to commercial properties and thereby?
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
I say, do you have these related to commercial properties versus residential properties and thereby exempting the private citizens?
You know, you can put in, there's a lot of distinctions that are allowed, commercial versus residential. That's, that's, that's an allowed distinction where you can ban it in, in residential and allow in commercial, something like that, if that's what you're talking about.
Right, I, I'm just wondering if we're going to end up catching the Christmas ornaments or whatever they call those.
Yeah, we, the ordinance as written does not address seasonal displays. It could, but it doesn't, and, and maybe it should.
Is there another way to address that? Because I, during the wintertime, often drive, occasionally drive over to Salem, and I know along the way, in certain places, there are some homes that have huge balloon Christmas decorations in their yard, and they're tethered by ropes. And I'm thinking as I'm driving by with the one coming in that direction, if they broke loose, you know, that could create a major traffic problem.
Yeah, yeah. And it's something that can be addressed, I could say. It's why we're trotting this out now, to get feedback and see what people have to say. Some other things that would be added as, as, as signs that aren't allowed are abandoned signs, which are defined as signs that don't, aren't for an existing business and haven't been for, for 180 days. Also, pennant strings and streamers, signs that emit smoke, actually, the ellipsis in there is for, it also, that says particulate matter, sound, odor, flames would be prohibited. Signs that prevent free ingress or egress through, through windows or doors, and reflective signs are signs that have mirrors or what have you in them. So these are all new possibilities. And a final.
Question. So a restaurant that's been closed for six months that has a sign out in front, is that sign considered abandoned?
It would be considered abandoned if, yes, yeah. The way this is written.
And then there are requirements for that defunct business to do something about that sign?
It would have to be removed under this draft.
Would there be penalties if they, is there a time limit? Say they're, say they're at 360 days already and they're still not doing anything, what do, what do we do as a city?
Well, enforcement typically would be either get an agreement to remove it through an assurance of voluntary compliance or a daily fine.
What's the daily fine?
I think it's a thousand dollars a day potentially.
Yeah, class, I think all title 17 or class B, which is a thousand dollars maximum.
Total? Oh, per day?
Per day.
Okay.
So the, the last thing of, of significance I want to draw your attention to is our provision on, provisions on non-conforming signs. And a non-conforming sign is a sign that was lawfully established, it met the standards at the time it was put up, but the rules have changed, and so it doesn't meet the standards anymore. The way our ordinance is written now, basically, a non-conforming sign could go on forever. Typically, you want to have non-conforming things go away, but our ordinance says that you can replace the structural members of a non-conforming sign with, with like material. So if it's supported by a, by an eight-by-eight wooden pole, then you can put a new eight-by-eight wooden pole in after that one rots or something. So that means essentially it could go on forever. The proposal, although I, I realized after we put this out that the way we're written, it would, it would continue that, but the proposal is to eliminate that allowance for replacing structural members of a non-conforming sign, so that eventually, non-conforming signs go away. There are places that have actually an amortization period for non-conforming signs, and I know like Oswego did a major revision on their sign code, and they created a lot of non-conforming signs. I think they had seven years to have them go away, and there were a number that didn't, and then they did enforcement, they ended up in court, but the court said, no, that was perfectly reasonable, seven years, you should have taken your non-conforming sign down.
I, I was going to say something like that, like five or a seven-year time limit, just because. because some signs are really big, like the new one that the Lincoln City Animal Clinic put in, I'm sure that thing had to be $20,000. And if we were to change the rules on them, then replacing that would be painful, and would, they would need some time to do something like that.
Yeah, this doesn't have an amortization period, and I'm not proposing one, but you know, as I said, there are places that have. And actually, the way things are now, there's places with non-conforming signs are very jealously guard them to make sure that they're able to keep them going, because generally, why they're non-conforming is because they're too big, and so they want to keep their big signs. So, yeah, that's all I have on that.
I'd probably move for a, an amortization, amortization scale for that, getting rid of the non-conforming.
Richard Appicello, is there, is there a reason why we could not put a sunset, a sunset clause on, on signs that aren't conforming?
No, I think amortization of signs is pretty well-established as a defensible way of dealing with signs, and Richard had suggested maybe a more creative way of prohibiting certain replacements associated with signs, but I think you could do both. You basically, you want them, non-conformities need to go away, and just making sure that they can recover their investment is, and get a reasonable return, is what amortization is about, so. And whether or not you do it with a period of years that, based on the expenditure for a sign, or you prohibit replacement above a certain percentage, it's pretty common to do that.
Our current reduction in sign size took place how long ago?
I don't know. I've been here 18 years, and I was here then, so...
So they've pretty much had a good chance to amortize anything they put into those signs by now anyway, so, yeah, I would suggest maybe you put a sunset or an amortization clause in your new change of rules, just so it does make an even playing field for everybody.
Richard, I had one question for you, and you mentioned that there are differing sign standards in Ocean Lake, Nelskot, and the Taft Village Core.
Right.
Would it make any sense to make them conforming, so you don't have those three different standards that need to be addressed?
In one sense, it certainly would make sense, you know, just in terms of liking conformity, uniformity, simplifying things. Those different standards were developed during the urban renewal charrette process for those three communities, and they reflected, you know, a lot of thought and public input on that. So in another sense, maybe we don't want to go down that road. And one thing we're doing is, is actually, we're just kicking off a project on our commercial design standards, and it is possible that those, that will end up addressing signage requirements too, in that process, for those, those three pearls of the city.
Yeah, that was my follow-up question. Thanks for answering.
Are there different standards for the original Taft, Culver City, Nelskot, et cetera, to Wacoma, or are they all the same?
Other than Taft, Nelskot, and Ocean Lake, all the standards are the same in the rest of the city.
And is this intended to be citywide then, or are you keeping the same exemption?
What this is saying is, here's, here's for the city generally, but be aware, in Taft, Nelskot, and Ocean Lake, there are either additional or different standards, and you might want to take a look at them. Because our, the way our ordinance is written now, it doesn't refer to them, we just have to know that they're there. And I think Kate can testify, she handles the sign-up permit applications, that a lot of people are surprised to learn that there's different standards. So we're trying to draw attention to the fact that there are different standards.
I have a couple of questions. Why are murals exempt?
Because they are. They're generally just not considered signs. I mean, you think of, like, in the Bayfront in, in, or in Newport, where there's a lot of buildings with just huge, huge murals on them, cover the whole face of the building, or even the, the back of the outlet mall here has that big Killer Whale Mall mural on it. It's, it's a huge can of worms, actually, trying to figure that out.
Well, it is, and I, that's one of the reasons I ask, because there's really no definition, clear definition of murals that takes away the ability to send a message in a mural. I mean, put wording and lettering on, that would essentially make it a sign.
That would make it a sign, at least where the wording, lettering, logos, or whatever would be, at least that part would be a sign.
Okay.
What if the mural had an image of the product that that store was selling, for example? There's no logo, there's no sign, but clearly, there's a message there as to what's inside this building.
You're raising the questions that make mural regulations a nightmare.
Okay, I'll move on to my next question, if you don't like that one. I, I know in the, in the dreaded VRD ordinances, the VRD is supposed to have a sign.
Right.
And I don't see anything in here. I only see...
I was thinking about that, we probably should have a, we probably should have a provision that says, at a vacation rental, licensed vacation rental dwelling, they're authorized to have...
They're required to.
Right, but I mean, they're required to under the VRD rules, but under the sign rules, they're allowed to also, so we should have a provision on that, yeah.
Richard, the, the IMLA recommendation is that signs that are compelled or required by different laws, like solicitation ordinance in our code says, you can, someone can be charged with criminal trespass if you have a sign up that says no solicitors. Well, we need to authorize those signs, which are authorized or compelled, and they usually put them in the category of governmental signs, because they're either owned by government or required by government. So we can add that to the definition of government signs, and it'd be allowed.
Yeah. What about no trespassing signs?
Same, same kind of idea, if, if you, if it's necessary to enforce your legal rights, like in order, police tell you, unless you have a sign up that says no trespassing, somebody can just walk right up to your front door, because you can. So if you put the sign up that says no trespassing in order to exercise your legal rights as a property owner, you shouldn't be cited under the sign code, and so that's something that the International Municipal Lawyers Draft Model Ordinance to address the cases that Richard was referring to, specifically puts that in, in the governmental sign category.
We can do that with the sign limit, or size limitations.
Okay, I have one more question.
Okay.
Has to do with the permit process that you talk about to get a temporary sign permit. And I'm wondering, is that, you know, in Rhodes Inn on July 5th, when we do the beach cleanup, we put a sign, a couple of signs up, hanging one on the, on the, coming in on Logan, on the, I think it's on the speed sign, and then a couple of other ones that are on, seahorses, seahorses, sawhorses, sawhorses. There are seahorses here in Lincoln City. Do we need a permit for that? Do we need a permit to get those signs up? Is that the intent of this permit?
Typically, you're not allowed to put signs up in the right-of-way. You're, so unless there's a permit, it's, it's basically an illegal sign. So, you know, usually exempt signs have to do with signs on your own property, not signs in public right-of-way. So unless we authorize such temporary signs, some codes define them as bandit signs or snipe signs, they're just kind of temporary and not authorized. You go around, you stick things on telephone poles and whatever, and they're usually subject to immediate abatement. We can just take them, because they're in the right-of-way.
One of the issues with this, once you, once you allow someone to do it, chances are you have to allow everybody to do it, so...
Well, I'm just, I'm curious if that, because that's an activity that's going to happen again, and whether they need to, to come in and get a permit for those signs.
We don't give permits for signs in the right-of-way, that's a general rule, just for, on private property.
Kate, can you tell them what the rules are for temporary signs?
I can get them. I'm trying to work it through, I'm not really sure there is a way to get, they're probably fairly large. I don't, I haven't seen the signs you're talking about, so my guess is they're fairly large.
They're not that big. They're, they're, you know, they're a little short, like caution signs, but they have a sign stuck on the front of them.
For the most part, if you want to put up a sign, you ask permission of the property owner, and if it falls within certain size limitations, it can, should fall under a temporary sign allowance for private property. But right-of-way signs are for, well, official traffic control devices, governmental directional signs, that's supposed to be there.
I mean, I suppose, I mean, thinking it through, if it's, if it's something from a recognized neighborhood association for an event of that association, I suppose that could even fall under the government signs that we're talking about.
It would fall under what, Kate?
Possibly. I'm looking at Richard to see if he thinks that's a terrible idea, to see if it would fit under the government signs category.
That's a category that's used for election signs, that's temporary?
We have a provision for temporary election signs, temporary political signs.
Well, maybe temporary neighborhood association event signs or something, create a category for that.
Well, it's almost like garage sale.
It's, it's hard not to make content-based distinctions, and, and so when you say government signs, usually we think about, you know, government functions, like, you know, directional traffic control devices are a good example. If you start saying, oh, well, this kind of not-for-profit sign, or this community sign is okay, then you get into, you know, you let one in, now you have to have everybody's event come in, so, especially when it comes to right-of-way. I mean, I, I think that temporary signs on your property are pretty much all we really need to say. You're allowed to have a temporary sign that's this big. You could say all year long, you could say during certain time periods, and that's not content-based, you could say you can have one all year long, and during these periods you can have another one, or during these periods you can have up to three, or five. But even when we start to make distinctions like garage signs and real estate signs, we're kind of talking about the content.
Yeah.
And although Richard's point was that if we change it to look at, is there a factual circumstance we can look at to determine, is the property in fact for sale? That's not what's on the sign, that's a factual determination outside of the content of the sign. You can do that, but it becomes, well, how do you know that it's actually for sale? So it may be that you just want to look at, a temporary sign is allowed all the time, and during certain times of the year, additional temporary signs are allowed. And holiday decorations and things like that might be an additional way to deal with, you know, temporary illuminated signs, not exceeding X number of lumens or whatever, to describe, some technical way of describing the amount of light or whatever. However, you will have people that will then take the lights and form them in words and make, and write messages, eat at Joe's or whatever, so you never know.
There are places that do things like, every residential property gets two signs, every commercial property gets three signs, up to a total of X square feet. The end. You know? And that's, you know, that's, that's the easiest way to regulate signs, and...
You can say whatever you want on those signs. Doesn't have to be garage sale, it could be, you know, hey, my wife had a child, or my daughter has just graduated, or whatever, I mean...
We love the city attorney, that could be a sign.
I don't think you can see that sign, no.
Richard.
You asked a question whether we like to keep carved signs or not, and I would, I would say, sure, keep it, why not? Always have that option present, yeah.
Carved signs.
Carved signs.
And cool, I know, I wrote, I like it.
Yeah, we have a provision that says carved signs are, are free, there's no, no application fee for it. And question is whether to keep that going.
We had a...
Is there a size limit on that?
I don't think there is on carved signs, I think it just says...
So I could just do a carved sign the size of my building, and...
You, well, it's a size limit in that, there's the, there's the ultimate size limit, I mean, you're allowed certain size signs, period, but you don't have to pay an application fee for a carved sign.
Ah, so I would, it would still fit under the building size requirements for signage, okay. I just want to be clear, because I could get crazy.
St. James Santiago School had a carved sign, and it's very handsome, it's very good-looking, yeah.
Anyway, you'll be seeing this again, and...
Well, thank you. Thank you, Richard. Any more questions, Matthew?
I have one more.
One more.
I'm sorry, just one more. There, there's an annual review of signs, or it's by, if somebody complains about a sign, or then you go out and take a look at it?
Well, if you get a permit for the sign, then it's allowed, if somebody complains, we can check and see whether there's a permit for it. Also, we tend to know whether a sign has a permit, just, you know, going up and down 101 enough, you know whether that sign was permitted, is that a new sign, that they get a permit?
So, and the Hilltop Restaurant, for example, that sign should actually, according to the law, come down?
Not according to, to the current law, but according to the proposed, since it's not advertising something that's there, it could come down. Which may be a content-based distinction, it may not be legal, so...
I think there were, it was like four justices kind of hinted that they thought that was content-based, and so, at least for the International Municipal Lawyers Association, they think you can still make the distinction between on-premise and off-premise. But in Oregon, it's kind of always been an issue, because we've been, we've been very content-neutral for a long time here, so that when the Supreme Court made their ruling a couple of years back, it was, the US Supreme Court, it was pretty much bringing them closer to where Oregon already was, so it really didn't have a real dramatic effect on us.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any planning commission training scheduled for tonight?
No.
Okay. Reports and comments?
I have some...
Richard, anything? Anything to report?
No, I'm just thinking, we have a lot of major projects going, as you got the tsunami item tonight, design standard, sign code, Villages of Cascadehead Plan, comp plan, vision...
Where is the visioning plan?
Other than that, we got nothing going. What?
How's the visioning plan?
Where is the visioning plan?
It is coming right along, and actually, we should be getting something from our consultant pretty quickly, I think within the next few weeks, I think. We had a draft, and we had some comments on it, so...
Do we have a PUD approval coming up too?
You have a what?
PUD approval.
That's on the agenda for July 3rd.
All right. Deborah, anything to report?
Well, I, I do want to follow...
Well, I do want to follow up. Our design standards review is coming up, and we've got a good committee, and our first meeting is on Friday. If there is somebody listening who has design experience, like a retired architect or designer of some sort, who feels that they might have something to add to that committee, we'd like to hear from them. Otherwise, I think we have a pretty good representation from businesses, neighborhood associations, individuals, we have artists, we have, you know, so, and we do have one designer who works in Lincoln City. So, we'll get started on Friday.
And, Richard, any comments? Commissioners, any comments?
Yes, I have something I wanted to bring up. I handed out everybody a couple pages of this relocation assistance, and this is addressing no cause evictions. This is the bill that was passed in Portland to prevent their continued struggle with housing. You know, the hardest part for this, you know, for all of us, is trying to get things built to get people into. And while we're waiting for that kind of stuff to happen, there's still this, this kind of actions going on in our town, where people are being kicked out, so that the landlord could then renovate and charge an exorbitant new rents, for no fault of the tenant. And that is not helping our housing situation in the least. And I think if we could basically adopt what Portland did, you know, almost word for word, and I'm sure Richard would have to look into that, to kind of put a Band-Aid or a tourniquet on the bleeding artery. I don't know what you guys think about this, if we need to all review it with some time and come back to this?
Let me ask a question first. Richard, what would be the process and the steps in this, if this is something we, an issue we want the city to address?
Well, you could initiate discussion, and if you want, if you want to initiate proposed ordinance amendments, you can do that, and direct, you know, the staff can try to draft something up based on what you have in mind, and then it would go ultimately up to the city council for adoption.
Let me ask our commissioners, is this a topic you would like to address at an upcoming meeting? Looks like it is. Could we schedule it as soon as the July 3rd meeting? Or do we have a...
If it's just a discussion, sure.
Well, I will not be here on July 3rd, so...
Why don't we, what about the second meeting in July, then?
Have fun, I won't be here.
We need Richard. That Richard.
Well, but if we want a discussion, you could even give us a memo if you had something you wanted to share, and then, and then we'd progress to the next step, which might be a draft ordinance.
Yeah, I think you're gonna need to give me a little time to look into this.
Sure.
So perhaps I'll give you a memo in time for the second meeting in July, and then we can talk about it, and then if, in fact, you're gonna give direction, then Richard will get looped in, so...
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Any further comments from commissioners? And we spoke about future meetings, so I think we're all set. Thank you, and welcome again.
Yeah, welcome.
Meeting is dismissed.